I'd like to call to order the August 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Westbridge Water School Committee. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Homem of silence. Thank you. A listing of matters by those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the Westbridge Water Community Access Media website, wb-kim.org. A recording of this meeting will also be made available on wb-kim.org. First up is the approval of minutes from our June 6th, 2022 meeting. I'd like to make a motion to accept the June 6th meeting's minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded in any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Next, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session in order to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Westbridge Water Education Association. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. And we will reconvene in, I think, about 30 minutes or so. I'd like to reopen the August 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Westbridge Water School Committee. During our executive session, the school committee voted unanimously to accept the MOA as a result of the recently concluded negotiations with the WBEA. The changes to the three-year contract include a 2% COLA increase each year, an increase in salary for the IAs at steps five and 10, a new step seven for the PARS, changes to PDPs, and changes to the long-term subsidy. These changes were approved by the WBEA on 8/13/2022. All right, so moving on, we think on the agenda next is the superintendent's update.
All right. First is Planning for Success. So this is a plan that we're going to be implementing. It's going to be our district strategic plan moving forward. We're going to be following the procedures and protocols established by Desi, and I put a link in there that I got shared with you some of the information about planning for success. And it's really meant to be an inclusive, hands-on planning process designed to build district and school capacity. Really what we want to do is take what we're doing well, look at our areas we need improvement on, and focus it into this district plan. The last district plan was from 2019 to 2022, so we are, it's time now for us to review it. This process is the same use by many area districts and within the state. We will be using a Planning for Success trained facilitator who actually is very familiar with Westbridge Water, so I think that's a win-win having Ruth come in who's also my, I work closely with the Superintendent Induction Program. She does know the district, but she also knows Westbridge Water, so I think that's going to be helpful in facilitating a really valuable plan for us. There will be a total of seven meetings, starting in September and going through December. When we meet in December, the goal is to create action plans, the action steps that we'll be implementing in the spring as part of this plan, which we assume will be a probably four- to five-year plan starting this year. On the next slide, you'll see we have listed all the meeting dates and the content for each of the meetings. It's a rigorous agenda. The meetings are taking place in the mornings, usually from 8:30 in the morning to 11:30, so we're working within the school day because we have a lot of school personnel. So you'll, you can see the different events that will be going on and the different themes for the meeting. You'll also notice that they list a full team and a leadership team. So when we talk about the leadership team, the leadership team is a smaller group, myself, the school building administrators, and the district central office administrators. And the full team is going to be that group, and it also includes the middle, senior, high school coordinators, our elementary instructional team leaders. Then we're looking for one to two school community members, parents, and students to be part of this team. And they're carefully placed on which groups are going to be meeting in which meeting. So that's, this is again the process they follow, and I think it's great because we're getting a lot of buy-in, a lot of input from a lot of different people, so we develop the best plan possible. So I will, if any members are interested, let me know now, you can let me know later, you can ask more questions. I know it's not the most convenient time, being in the morning, but I think there are one, two, three, what is this, five different meetings from September through December. And we'll also be reaching out to parents and Mr. Page got to talk to some students as well.
The dates work out.
Okay.
I think I should be able to.
Perfect. Thanks.
He said one to two, right?
Yeah, so if they would also want to join us.
Probably can't make the dates work.
I'll take a look.
Okay. And we'll certainly keep everyone updated as we go through the process. All right, next we have the English Language Education Tiered Focus Monitoring Review. Mrs. Yanis is going to provide us some information on this.
So every six years, Desi or COLA conducts a tiered focus monitoring review based to make sure we're in compliance with our English language learners. So our review dates this year, they came between February 22nd and March 4th, and they finally sent the report on March 23rd. They look at 12 ELE criteria, and that, those criteria target implementation requirements related to our programs, and the 12 requirements are up there. We had eight fully implemented, and we had four partially implemented. So the four that we had partially implemented were program placement and structure. That's how do we place our students, how do we know what level they're at and where they belong, parent involvement, declining entry to a program, which is if a student opts out, how do we document that, and then parental notification. So we had already started working on things prior to the tiered focus monitoring. So as of now, we have added a full-time teacher. She was hired in August 2021. Prior to her being hired, she worked as a part-time tutor during May and June because we were getting more and more students. And she also replaced a sudden resignation. We also hired an additional full-time teacher in December of 2021. We purchased the REACH Elementary Curriculum in July of 2021. We've created a flagging system in our student information system, Aspen, to indicate which families need translation, verbal or written, or perhaps they, their student doesn't need English language services, but they still need something translated, the parents need something translated. We have a new data, a new way to track data referencing the home language survey. We've added Lion Bridge Translation, and the building secretaries were trained in March of 2022. So Lion Bridge will provide instant translation, so all you have to do is call a number, and if the secretary has, let's say someone's coming in to register and they don't speak English, they can put a translator on the phone immediately. If someone comes in with a problem and they need to talk to someone, we can provide translation immediately. We're working on creating a detailed list of our interpretation services. We've established and held our first English learner family night in May. It was amazing to see all the families that came out. They all provided the dessert from their native country, and we had raffles, and it was just a really great night and to have those, those families included in everything that we do. In June, we purchased a middle school, middle, senior, high school ESL curriculum. We've also purchased Elevation, and that's an EL program management platform. We've been training on it. We had a training today. And that basically is a data warehouse where it's going to store a lot of our EL information. So it will, it will pull in our, the student's STAR scores, it will pull in their MCAS scores, their access scores, and it'll keep it all in one spot. It will help us maintain and monitor our reporting and our processes that we have to report to Desi. It's going to be a big help in everything we do in the district in regards to EL. And we've held our first multilingual summer academy this summer. And to say I was proud of those students that came is an understatement. We saw such growth in just five weeks with those kids and their, their community and the way they were interacting with each other and their peers outside of the EL population. So it was an amazing thing to be seen. So even though we're a small incidence district, we do have 43 current EL students. However, that does not include our incoming kindergarten students. We have about 27 students that need to be screened right now. Now, not all of them will be picked up for EL services, but we still have to screen them. 51% of our current students require 90 or more minutes per day of service. 49% require 45 minutes of daily services. And you can't just take all the students and put them in one group. You have to, they have to be grouped by level. And those numbers up there do not include the 13 former English language learners that we also have to monitor. So we're moving in the right direction. We've got a lot of things underway. So anybody have questions?
I'm excited for the number of.
The elevation sounds amazing. You're going to get a lot of incidences.
I had training on Friday and then training again today. And we just hired a new .5 ESL teacher.
In the process of.
In the process of hiring.
It's not signed yet in the dotted line.
ESL teacher up at the high school. So we've increased our staff, we've increased the serves, what we are providing, so.
I mean, just because I was curious, what was the age range of the kids for the summer program?
So the summer program, we didn't have any high, well, we did have one high school student, but a lot of kindergarten and first grade students, present kindergarten and first grade, second grade, third grade. We had fourth grade and fifth grade as well. So it was put out to, the high school kids are hard. They, they.
A lot of work.
Yeah, so, but we did have one high school student show up. So, I mean, it was an amazing summer for them. I wish it was longer. Next year.
And I just want to say, the, the needs in our district for EL is very consistent with our budget and our requests.
I was just going to say that.
I think very, you know, this is something we need. These are students we need to service within our district, so population grows, the needs grow, the financial commitment needs to grow.
Thank you for this. I think that this makes it very tangible. It feels like just yesterday, we were having a conversation with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen around why we needed a budget increase. And this makes it very clear where we were only partially implementing in, in four areas, and these were all the steps put into place, and all of these steps required resources. And we've shown a lot of growth, and we're headed in the right direction, and I think this is, makes it very tangible for anyone questioning that.
Well, thank Mrs. Yanis. Mrs. Pistorino, who's our EL coordinator.
I want to thank Mary. She's amazing.
Amazing.
Simply amazing. So she's, she's worked really hard on this.
John Collins has done a lot with, you know, integrating the, you know, students and getting all the data that Elevations has needed for the system and our entire EL staff. They've really just been very flexible and worked extremely hard to address the needs of our kids.
And even with the staff we have, it's still stretching. They're able to service, they don't have like any free time to do, take a bathroom break some days. So it's, you know, even though we have, we're fortunate to have the staff now, it's, I think the population's just going to keep going up. It's, it's held steady over the past two years, around 43, 44, but that's gone up from 19 three years ago, so.
Does Lion Bridge have the ability to translate to American Sign Language too, or is it mainly spoken languages?
I don't know. That's a good question.
My cousin actually was born to deaf parents, so he was always looking for translation for his parents and ended up acting as a translator. So it's just something I always think.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll get to that.
Yeah, that's an area we.
I'm not sure. Our town currently has a need for it, but.
Well, we have, we do. We have another interpreting service that we have used in the past for parents who needed it. Partners interpreting.
You just can't get it in the moment.
Can't get it in the moment. You have to schedule it.
They come for open house. We get those things for our test experience.
I mean, even for open house, we're going to have interpreters come. Maureen was working on that with one of the EL teachers today, so we'll have, we have interpreters. We had them last year. We had interpreters come to the multilingual night, so.
Next, the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority. For those watching, I'm familiar with it. It's an agency that school districts will submit a statement of interest to look for a potential building project. So back in the spring, we submitted a statement of interest for the Rose Almato and the Spring Street School, ideally to look at a consolidation project. So the statement of interest were discussed with both the school committee here and the Board of Selectmen, and both granted their approval for submission. The statement of interest discussed the physical condition of the schools, all the spaces and the academic programs, or what types of programs we may be lacking due to the facilities that we currently have. That was very exciting. Over the summer, we got a call from the MSBA saying that we are, they would like to put us into what they call the Senior Study, which is the next step. This is not an invitation to work with the MSBA, but it's certainly part of their due process, due diligence phase of the statement of interest process. So in September, we'll be meeting with the MSBA staff, myself, Mrs. Grant for the Business Department, Mrs. Goulet, who's principal, David Gagny will represent the town, and Mrs. Hume will represent the school committee. So they're going to talk about the different, the two different statements of interest. We'll meet at the Rose Almato, we'll take a tour over there, and then they're going to go over the Spring Street School and tour there as well. So we're looking forward to showing them our buildings, talking to them, providing them information, and hopefully taking that next step towards a potential building project. And finally, opening day, the most exciting day of the year. A week from today for our staff, a week from tomorrow for our students. Grade one to 12, our kindergarten preschool starts on September 7th. I want a huge thank you to all of our administrators, building and grounds, maintenance department, school office workers, and all the teachers who have come in over the summer. A lot of them doing parts of interviews or helping out or coming in for programs, trainings, and so forth. It's great to see them, but we're so excited to see the kids and welcome them back. It's going to be a lot of fun. We do have a lot of orientation programs. They are going to be in the, the dates coming up for the calendar. Most, I think all, well, most of them are on Thursday. It's coming Thursday, just a lot of ones a little bit later. And we're excited also to welcome a lot of new staff. We've lost staff that actually have changed roles, so we've noted that in the welcome back letter, and we've hired a lot of other great new staff. I sent out the district newsletter today to provide information. What's exciting is each of the building principals are also going to be sending them out every two weeks. So we'll be blanketing all kinds of information, all at a little bit of a different angle. I think it's good to provide information, pictures, and highlight what's going on, but also the great things that are going on in Westbridge Water. Exciting times as we prepare to start school.
Thank you, Mr. Broadbent. So moving on to business, first up is our school improvement plans.
So first off, I want to do a huge thank you to our council this year for both Rose Alm and Spring. You know, it was not, it was a very unique year. You know, some meetings were in person, some people were, some people were remote. We did some half-and-half meetings, we did whatever we could, especially for some of the parents who really liked the virtual piece because they, one, one of our parents was, she'd take her lunch hour during our school council meeting, so she was at work, so she could join us, and she couldn't do it any other way, which was a great, you know, perk of, in the last two years, we were able to do. So what I was going to do is I'm going to start the Spring Street plan. I'm going to go through the goals and initiatives, and then I'm going to just kind of summarize the action steps. You're going to see a lot of similarities between the Spring and Rose Alm. So goal number one is under the pillar of rigorous and relevant curriculum. The initiative is investigate various elementary ELE programs and implement updated curriculum K to five. We're super excited that we finally have our new ELE program. The teachers will be working with the professional development around wit and wisdom, integrity for pre-K, K and one, and foundations. And we're also working on the continuation of expectations from K to three, to make sure that it's consistent and continues through so that you see the teachers using the same strategies and expectations. Goal number two is the pillar of professional practice. The initiative is providing scheduled opportunities for inter-school and cross-grade level collaboration. These are things that we had in place before COVID. We really started to get especially K and one teachers together. That was one of the disservice of having two separate buildings, that they weren't able to collaborate together, and we were able to get that in place a couple of years ago, so we want to get back to that. The teachers really enjoyed it. They spent some time in each other's classrooms, and we want to make sure we can get teachers back with COVID restrictions hopefully lifted forever and ever, that they can get back into doing that. We also want to work on strengthening the relationship between grade levels, especially at the Spring Street School. They have the flexibility of the middle, senior, high school students coming over. We saw that this year with the great science classroom students coming over and working with our kindergartners. And we'd like to, you know, invite some of the Howard kiddos over to be able to bridge that. Rose Alm's not as easy, even though it's the whole two miles down the road, but let's see if we can get, you know, the older kids getting working with the smaller and younger students. And actually, at this meeting, we started to talk a little bit about, and if you've been in Spring Street School, you know that the preschool isn't totally separate from the kindergarten, and we don't do a lot of work with them combining and spending time together, so we want to kind of roll that into it as well. Goal number three is under the pillar of student support, wellness, and safety. So the initiative is to develop a consistent approach to embed social-emotional learning expectations and support into the general curriculum that can be scaffolded for use for pre-K and 12. So we started our SEL team last year. We wanted to continue with that team. We want to start looking at some appropriate, grade level appropriate, age appropriate programs and see if we can start to pilot that. And also, this was a great conversation that we had in both schools, is to really make sure our libraries and the books that we're providing our children represent all families and all of our students. So that's something we're going to start to incorporate in as well. Any questions on Spring Street? All right. The McDonald's School, goal one is under the pillar of rigorous and relevant curriculum. The initiative is to investigate various elementary ELE programs and implement updated curriculum K to five. So again, teachers working through the professional development and making sure we're supporting them as much as we can. The grade one teachers will also be receiving support integrity. We're going to continue to work with teachers to ensure the data is purposeful and driving instruction. We introduced STAR to our teachers last year. It was really just an opportunity for them to kind of get their feet wet and to learn about it before really diving really far into it and using it to drive their instruction and sharing reports with families. So this year, that will be our goal. Goal number two is under the pillar of professional practice. The initiative is provide scheduled opportunities for inter-school and cross-grade level opportunities. Again, getting teachers in to visit each other, you know, K and one and maybe three and four would be a great, because of that bridge and them not being in the same building. It's not as easy for the Howard students and the middle, senior, high school students to come over to work with our students, but let this past year, Ms. Alves and Ms. Mastina, the first and third grade teachers, did some work together with ST Math Buddies, and we saw great results from that, so we'd like to spread that out schoolwide. New to us, and it kind of mimics what Mr. Lehman has at the Howard School, is implementing a math intervention block, like his WIN block, to give our students an opportunity to be enriched and pushed in math and also, you know, get some instruction and support if they need it. It's a lot on the plate for teachers this year. There's a lot of new things, so we're going very slow with that. We're hoping maybe two to three times a week, maybe December, June more. We don't want to overwhelm everyone too much. Goal number three, student support, wellness, and safety. The initiative is to develop a consistent approach to embed social-emotional learning expectations and support into the general curriculum that can be scaffolded for use for pre-K to 12. This past year, we, I'm really proud of the SEL committee that we formed. They worked really hard and created a PBI system that we're going to implement for the beginning of the school year, so we're really excited about that. Any questions?
I'm thrilled to hear everything in SEL. That was my, my thought, so thank you.
Hello. Please excuse my supposities allergy, so bear with me. So goal one is in rigorous and relevant curriculum. It is increased achievement as measured by statewide assessments through school-wide proficiency of equal or higher than the state in ELE math and science. So a couple of the action steps that I'm presenting. One is implementation of bi-weekly grade level, 75-minute uninterrupted time with planned planning time, which means every other week, grade four will get together, grade five will get together, grade six will get together, along with a specialification teacher, any ESL teachers, to plan together to best meet the needs of all the students. The teachers at Howard are excellent, and I believe if we give them even more collaboration time, they'll get even more results, which are best for the students. During these times, we're going to implement the UDL guidelines of engagement, action, and representation, which just means we're being proactive and cognizant that students learn differently, and we're going to be able to give them some choice in some of how we provide our lesson plan. And then also, we'll be implementing six to seven week data cycles to review student progress. And of course, as Principal Goulet said, we have a new ELE curriculum that a lot of this will be focused around. Goal two is under the pillar of relevant, rigorous and relevant curriculum, as well as student support, wellness, and safety. It's the implementation of the multi-tiered systems of support to ensure a continuum of evidence-based practices to support all students. It's sort of aligning everything hopefully. So we'll be using our WIN block to provide tier two homogeneous grouping for the skill and activity-based instruction. An example would be what Principal Goulet said for math, so at this point, students get what they need. It's what I need, so if students are enriched, they're enriched. If they are struggling in math, they will be the math tutor and so on. Once again, the CPT meetings, once again, I'm going to repeat them because I think it is a huge game changer for the teachers at Howard, so that will be a thing about there. We'll also have bi-weekly RTI meetings to respond to students in need of intervention. We'll have weekly grade level SEL blocks of instructions for grade four, five, and six, which rely to our PBI system, and so on. We'll also have our weekly wellness meetings to monitor students who are in need. And also allows the staff, Officer Pope comes in, the nurse comes in, and the wellness team, that's compromised, and myself, school psychologist, behavior technician, and any teacher in need to stay on the same page to make sure we're communicating and being proactive. Goal number three is under the professional practice pillar. It's using grade level planned planning time to increase teacher efficacy in collaborative lesson planning, data cycle inquiry, and training structure. So as stated before, those planned planning, we're going to have 20 of those meetings worth a year with everyone in it. We'll be able to align our practices, and we'll continue to implement the data site inquiry, reflection, and keep the cycle going. And then our school council goals that we created last year with the school council was focused on, well, the pillar of student support, wellness, and safety. It was to increase, increase, increase safety at arrival and dismissal, increase, increase the cleanliness of the campus, and increase mindfulness practices. So step one, which is a very easy thing, is to increase the amount of support staff at dismissal. So if you come to Howard a week tomorrow, you'll see many more staff at dismissal with We're going to, we'll also be posting our policies. We've sent a lot out already. I'm also going to do video arrival and dismissal because there's a very small ship, but just enough to model it, so we can see there's some double lines going across. We're going to, the students already love this. We're going to, the students already love this anyways, but we'll implement cleanup teams Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for the students who volunteer. It's sort of a branch of our PBI system to ensure clearness of campus. When it comes to mindset, we'll be shifting our morning announcements to include a mindful minute. It's gonna be led by our school psychologists and leading the students, of course. And I just think as a regular practice, every school council meeting, we'll probably start off by reviewing safety policies and just staying fresh with everything. I know I was speaking about, any questions? It's just a snippet, there's a lot more in there. I did change the title of goal two today because it just benefits where the action steps actually are.
For the middle to high school, each of our initiatives, we try to keep in line with our VAS. We just had our decennial visit, we will have our five-year review coming up, so we try to keep those in line. Our first strategic initiative was reviewing and updating our curriculum, the written curriculum into common templates. We have, we've worked with Deb, we've made great strides. We do have a five-year Google sheet, which delineates what still needs to be done and what we have completed. With any curriculum, it's always ongoing, because we always encourage our teachers to come forward with any new ideas or courses that they would like to teach, and we always love to work with them. That's what's an ongoing document. Deb comes over and meets with our coordinators in our bi-weekly, bi-monthly meetings and gets input there. And our goal is to have most of the core and all the classes that we have done by the summer of two thousand twenty-four, through some of the summer writing. We did start a new curriculum for the illustrious of math, so that's gonna have to be all start from scratch this year. Done by Jason and Mike Hyde have started to work on that, so it's good. Our second initiative is a tech integration. It's to continually integrate and embed upper letters of the CMR. We do a great job, our teachers of the substitution and the augmentation. We still have work to do in the modification, which allows for significant task redesign and then the redefinition, which is something that you could not do without technology and new instruction. So, and our staff works hard, they go out to PD. We're bringing back, we have Tech Tuesdays after school. Our tech teacher has offered to bring that back next year. And teachers sign up and share best practices and ideas, and she does a great job with that. Our teachers do a great job of just sharing ideas, honestly, through padlets and best practice through common planning and department meetings, common planning, and all of that. Our third strategic initiative was to enhance, expand specialized programs and services, such as wellness supports and continue of special education programs and services. One of them, working with Kathy, Director of Student Services Learning Center, which we started this year. And we want to continue to, you know, bring about any enhancements we can so we can keep our population, our property here in the building and be able to service those students to the best of our ability. We meet weekly, every Tuesday with our student success team. It incorporates myself, the assistant principals, school nurse, social workers, counselors, Officer Pope. And we sit and we talk about students at risk and what we can do to help them so that they can succeed, so that they stay in school, so that they come to school. And we, we work really hard in that, and our team does a great job in that. We align, point people, you know, for certain students and so forth. We have an SEL committee that meets monthly after school. We have some great ideas. You know, our teachers, they just, they have great ideas, they really care about these kids, and they know that SEL is an important, you know, part of keeping kids in school, especially with a lot of the anxieties that we're seeing. So we, a few times this year, run assembly days and in the afternoon, so they have all their core classes. And then the afternoons, we do some fun stuff. And there's choice and it's to kids' abilities. And we try to, you know, touch upon, not everybody loves athletics. You know, some wanna go play music in the band room, or some wanna just go and maybe do some yoga. So we take those, because I think it's important for our students to have some of those times to be able to unwind and, you know, see different sides of our teachers too. You know what I mean? Like, oh, they like yoga, oh, they really have a great art, you know, talent. And we have by, in our bi-monthly meetings with our coordinators, we are talking about, you know, embedding some more diverse aspects to our curriculum. You know, as increasingly, you know, the diversity of students that are coming in to the building, we wanna have some meaningful curriculum for them. You know, whether it's, you know, incorporating students with special needs, some, you know, literature or different types of authentic materials that we can bring to the instruction for our kids. So we are working on that. Increase of student achievement is always a goal for us in ELA, math, and science, especially to some of the MCAS. Our common planning and department identifying students who need maybe some more support, and we place them in academic seminar blocks to get that extra instruction and help, whether it be organization or some math tutor, ELA tutor, help with writing, all of those skills. The implementation, like I said, of the new illustrious of math, which was, we got through the DCE, which was huge. It was a great addition to this year, so kudos to Deb for getting that for us. We have STAR assessment, we're gonna have a beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year assessments, so we can really identify where are our gaps. We're gonna see where they are in the beginning, look in the middle, you know, maybe we can tweak some things. We have some abilities in our H block, where we have some plus classes, an extra math, an extra English, an extra reading. So we can identify, maybe this student needs an extra math. Maybe they need two terms of extra, two quarters of extra math instead of, so it gives us a lens to see some of the gaps. Extra help sessions and again, our seminar. We have an eighth grade seminar, seventh grade seminar, and nine, ten, and eleven, twelve, so we cover the full grade. We wish we could have more, but that would need more personnel. And then differentiation, being able to differentiate, offer students more choice, whether it be in assessment, how they're gonna, you know, show you that they have obtained the knowledge, or whether it be in choice and choosing different types of assignments through padlet or just reading, you know, in the ELA classes. Working within departments, the use of technology, and being able to, you know, show what our kids do outside of the classroom walls. And Scott Gray, we're so fortunate to have him, he does a great job of pushing that up. Again, there's more that we can do. So those are our initiatives moving forward. Does anybody have any questions? Should I say?
Yeah, no, I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you to our administrators and their councils. The plans are rigorous, thoughtful, and hopefully impactful. I think these are the kind of things we talk about every day with our staff and drive our kids forward. Hopefully, they're gonna be part of the administrator educator goals and they'll be part of, hopefully, our whole plan for success. So all, what we do is we want to, everything we're doing is focus it into these important areas for improvement for the district. So thank you.
I think moving right along is the middle, senior high school student and athletic campus.
Sure. So I believe you have changes. What I did is I tried to put them in red, just to show any of the verbiage changes. A lot of it was name changes for new staff coming and going. The date for the decennial visit, it was here on page nine. For some reason, volleyball wasn't on page eleven as a sport, so that was a miss last year. So we added that. We did, teachers came to me at the end of last year extremely frustrated with cell phones. The feeling of just really a huge distraction. And I, and I think it may have come from COVID, where kids were home on, you know, virtual for a while and they were able to have their phone more often, I don't know. But the frustration was real. And so we talked about it as a staff to see, a few staff members piloted, they're like a shoe rack almost, with numbers. And they said it worked really well. And they said it almost felt like the kids in the classroom were like, they all knew no one had their phone. So it caused a little bit less stress in the moment of always feeling like they just check their phone, check their phone. I, I know myself as an adult, it's, it's, it's bad. You know, I'd love to be able to check it out. So what we collectively decided was for students, so typically, middle school students, when they came to school, they'd put their backpack with their phones in their lockers for the day. They could access it passing time, break in the morning, and lunches. Other than that, it was locked away in their lockers. So, you know, we talked about should we continue to do that with the middle school under this new idea, or let's go seventh to twelve. I think, you know, as a staff, when we talked about it, it was better to keep it consistent amongst all grades. So there was no, because some of our teachers teach both middle school and high school, so they figure, you know, best for consistency. So as students come in, I did send an email to parents, so they kinda have an idea, this is coming out of her school committee approval in the handbook, that this was coming, but I think it's better for instruction for kids in their attention to the learning at hand. I know I did get a few emails back about safety. Honestly, I feel, it's funny, because high school kids always have their phone on them. Middle school, in a, in a true crisis, their phones are being in the lockers, so they wouldn't even have access to them. I think having all phones in the classroom is actually safer for everybody. I know there are, there were some saying, well, what if I need to get a hold of my child? We would never, you know, if somebody calls the school and you need your child, we will get your child. And we will make every effort to go get them, relay, but sometimes it's just, hey, make sure they take the bus, you know what I mean? And we would, we would have that happen. A lot of times, when kids are getting phones taken away for taking it out during class when they shouldn't, it's honestly parents texting themselves, you know what I mean? And, and, you know, we've all been guilty of it, I'm sure. So it's just, they'll probably, kids will feel what we don't want. It's not a punishment, it's really more to keep them focused on the instruction in the classroom. If a student is ever feeling like they really, I have to call my mom, I have to, you know, somebody's sick, I need to check. We're all, as, we're all parents, I'm a parent of three. Teachers are gonna let a student, if they feel like they are distressed, that they need to contact home, that will happen. So I'm asking for the support of the school committee to support our teachers, because this really did come from them. And they're the ones who live in every day in the classroom, who are working with our students. And, and when we roll it out with kids, I really want it to be positive. I don't want it to be a punishment, because that's not what it is, it really isn't. And I really think that once they get used to it, I think they'll be, it'll be, it'll be a, a little bit of a relief that they don't have to contain what's going on, what's going on, what's going on. A lot of times, when students would ask to go to the bathroom, they'd pop by their locker, check their phone, you know, let's, hey, let's meet green, green commons bathrooms, you know, so I think a lot of that did happen. They're, they're kids, you know what I mean? Of course they're gonna do that. So we're just trying to alleviate more of the distraction. So we can come back to that, but I wanted to throw that in there. The new language is there. Sixteen, it was just a language change. In the handbook, it kinda lists warning, meeting, you know, detention, and that's not necessarily the, always the exact process. You know, if students, you know, have a altercation or if somebody is doing something, you may not, not gonna get warned. You know what I mean? We might go right to, you know, in school suspension or something like that. So it's just really to clear it up, so it's not the way it goes one to down the bottom. Page sixteen, just a bit dress, because it was almost redundant to the student attire, which is further down. The update on the cell phone, electronic devices, Justin Brad was kinda mimicking the new policy. Nineteen, we did move, we moved last year as well, and it worked well, it was like, almost like a trial. Instead of parents getting all those papers to fill out, we went electronic. And we got a lot, we got the information back much quicker. It was barely a success. So we are gonna get, we just wanna make sure that parents are aware that everything in Aspen, it really should be updated. So if anything changes throughout the year, and we'll say this at open house at curriculum night and at the orientations for the seventh grade and the new students, it is imperative that all of that information is updated and accurate. Because that is where we go if we need to get a hold of somebody. That just continues on the emergency. On page nineteen, happily deleting face coverings and masking. Page twenty-three is just with the new assistant principals name, what, once that's official and so forth, that we'll add that there. Page twenty-eight, just a change in the meeting times monthly to quarterly. Student attire is also, this is another hot topic, but just to stay consistent with the school committee policy also. Just all the verbiage, kinda, we stick, so we're on the same page. So that's really all that was. Does anybody have any questions on any of the changes?
My only question on like the cell phone policy, like, what about classes that were historically like art class? We could listen to music, is it's across the board or is it up to the instructor?
It's across the board. Every classroom is equipped with, well, first of all, kids can, their Chromebooks can allow them to listen to music, so they could do it there. A lot of classrooms also, they kinda have like our music of the day, and they pick that way and they'll play it over the overhead. But yeah, no, that's a perfect example, you know what I mean? Because kids do love to listen art, and other classes, when they're writing, sometimes they like to sue the father. So they will still have that ability through their Chromebooks.
Okay.
So I've had some pause about the cell phone policy. Just a little pause, just about things from a safety perspective. And then I go in these swirling little worlds of, you know, what if there was a situation and they needed their phones? But then they're not supposed to have their phones if, you know, in an emergency situation, because you don't want them pinging or ringing, you know, if there's something going on in the schools, it could be also, also maybe more of a safety concern, right? So I think, you know, I've had some pause about the cell phones, you know, from, from that perspective and kids losing some empowerment, that they may feel like, hey, I've had this, but I can totally understand your situation with the level of distraction it must, it must, it must be pretty bad for you to be here saying that, right? So it's, it's a, you know, but if, you know, in this language, you do say that they can still access their cell phones in between classes or in breaks or whatnot, so it's not like you're going full, I know there's like yonder at other districts where they have those bags that they lock their phones in. And you have to go to like the main office to get them unlocked or something.
No, this is eighty minutes. So at the end of every eighty minutes, you know, students can have them in between classes. We do, after first block, we have a seven-minute window in the morning that they go, they have a snack, they have down cafeteria. For the high schools in the morning, the, after first block, for the middle school, it's at the end of second block. So they have that seven-minute window, two, two to three minutes, I think it's three minutes in between classes and then lunch, that they can use them. And like I said, if there was ever a student who really needed, you know what I mean? You know, we'll talk with teachers about that, because in the beginning, it's gotta be tough for some kids. It will be, you know what I mean? They're so used to having their phone right there. So, you know, we'll have conversations. So that teaches, respect that, that in the beginning it might be. But I think kids knowing, and nobody has a phone, like, but they're all there, they can still see them, it's not like they're locked away. I think it takes away, and like I said, I can only speak for some of the teachers that piloted last year, that they said, they like, they were like, it kinda like, it was almost like
A relief?
Really, yeah. I know myself, and I, I feel like I said to somebody when they went out Yeah. I know myself and I feel like I said to somebody when they were asking, if I leave my house without it, oh, if I leave my house, I like have that minute of panic. And then I'm like, wow, that was just a great twenty minute, you know what I mean, time away. And but I don't want to pretend that's not important and stressful for some kids to not be able to have it. But I think the more we can teach kids that it's okay, you're going to survive without your phone. You know what I mean? And if there's ever truly, if somebody really, really needs to hold you, they're going to call the main office and you, you know what I mean, like we will get you. Or if something happened, the phones, like I said, will be in the classroom so that, you know, a kid could access it if there was a, you know, something they needed to. And we'll work with families, you know, to overcome the stress in the kids. You know, seventh grade is coming in. I know in sixth grade, they can't have it all, right?
It's the backpack policy.
And where's the backpack?
Stay in the locker.
Right?
Unless the teacher's.
And they can't use it at all?
No, it's just.
So for maybe incoming seventh graders are kind of are used to not having it. So that's actually a good thing. And we want to teach kids responsibility. That's our job, you know? But they've shown that they are not being responsible. And it's not just a few, it's a lot of kids. It's become an epidemic that we're just trying to get back to learning and pay attention.
If they're putting their cell phone in a holder when they come in a class, are they going to be putting smartwatches with it?
Thank you, Mr. Schmier. That may be the next thing, but I think it's a lot harder to text on, it's a lot harder to hide this. You know, they're very quick at this, but it's not as easy to text on.
And you don't have the social media temptation on your watch. You might see that alert coming from mom and you know in eighty minutes you have to respond to her, but you can't right now because it's over there. I'm in favor of this. I've seen it myself. It's the power struggle in my own kids. It's a power struggle to get them to do a chore or to read or to do something because they've got a screen and they don't want to shut it off. I say, go pick up something in the kitchen and, you know, they're on the screen. So, and I know, I've seen it firsthand that it's really bad in the classroom. It's a huge temptation. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
I have a great YouTube video that I came across from one of my teachers, actually. When I sent this out and I'll share with you, it was really profound. It was, it was a poem that was read one way and then it was read like completely backwards. And it was pretty like eye opening. So I'll share it with you on your emails. It's pretty cool. And it's all about interaction with people versus your face and screen. It's pretty cool.
You said, Mrs. Page, do you have checked with a lot of the local, other districts also?
I'm on a social principals group. It's everybody's topic of discussion. Yeah, about the language change for our cell phones, the shearing changes, that and attire are the two big things. And I just, I really don't want them to think it's a punishment because it's not where this is coming from. It's just coming from a place of, you know, like you're losing, you're losing instruction because you're so focused on your phone.
And a lot of it is outside of their control. It really is. Because you just, for adults, you check it, you check it, you check it. And we want them focused. We want to accommodate their attention, that they're able to focus in the classroom.
One hundred percent. Sorry, Donna. Like everything else, like we could, there's always, we can always revisit things, but this, you know what I mean? Let's give it a try. Let's see, you know, if it, see how it goes.
Yeah, nothing. It's like you said, it's all in how you approach things to ease their fears before, you know?
Sure.
Put things out front with them. We're not trying to punish you. This is just, we're doing this because this is best interest for you.
For eighty minutes. And then you can check, you know what I mean? Like then you can check it.
It's not like you're locking them in those things with those special locks, right?
Those, I think, cut down, it cuts the internet and everything, I think.
Yes, they do. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes to the middle, senior high school student handbook as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So why don't we just go ahead and do a roll call vote for this one?
Aye, yeh.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Milton.
Myself, aye. So if it passes unanimously?
Appreciate that. And like, you know, maybe the first, maybe October, I can follow up with, you know what I mean?
Let's go in.
Do you want me to do that? Let me take one? Sure. So you have in red the athletic handbook. Unfortunately, last year, we did have a little bit of unsportsmanlike conduct, you know, in some of the sports, which is very uncharacteristic of our West Bridgewater team. So Jen and I sat down and just kind of wanted to be pretty clear and add the word, the wording in the handbook for spectators and the rules and the code of conduct. And again, we say to our kids all the time, play hard, love it, but always remember that you're, you know, you're West Bridgewater. You're carrying our name and respect is number one and good sportsmanship. And we talked with our coaches and we want everyone held to that standard and spectators as well. So we just added some language to it so that they could just see it. And that's what you'll see here under, on page three, just kind of outlining some of the spectator expectations and results of if they do not follow that. And then, you know, we moved a few years ago to, for students to ride the bus home and sometimes, and the reason we did that is we were finding, number one, we want the bond with the team and the bus ride to and from is a big part of that. And we found sometimes when kids were able to leave with the parents, we'd go there, there was some kids that weren't, you know, they don't have anybody there to watch them. And a few of those kids would be coming home in a bus with the coach, you know what I mean? And then what else? Go home with mom or dad or their guardian. And we just felt like, kind of lousy. So we moved to that so that they need to ride home. But we also listened to parents and agree that sometimes some things do come up. You know what I mean? And so this year, we are allowing each student to have one free pass per season. You know, we understand that sometimes the only time to get dysphoria is that, you know what I mean? And so that we're given that one pass per season. But it has to be, you have to let the A.D. know and the coach know prior to. It's not just when you're on the field. So it has to be pre-arranged. And then under academic requirements, it was really just cleaning up the language so that it mimics the student handbook.
Just a question about the pass. If a second incident didn't come up, did come up, would there be some leeway? It wouldn't be a free pass, but could arrangements be made if a student didn't have to take advantage of a second time of not going on the bus?
If there's like an, like if there's a family emergency or if there's, you know, of course, we always work, even when you didn't have the pass, we work with families. But what we don't want is not for convenience. So we really, and they've been great, you know, it was the first year it was tough. And then they've been really good. So we kind of want to meet them halfway to say, we hear you. You know, we know that some, and they may not use it, but at least it gives them an opportunity if they need to. So.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the middle, senior high school athletic handbook as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote again. Mr. Yeo?
Aye, yeh.
Aye, Dragon Eddie.
Aye, Schmier.
Aye, Milton.
And I, Yoo. So that passes as well.
Do you want me to do the permission slip now or do you want?
It's up to you. Do you need a break?
I have it. I mean, it's very, it's a similar, so for those of you who may not be aware, our seniors, we do have a senior privilege for students, our seniors who are in good standing, meaning passing our classes, not tardy, no discipline. They are allowed to leave the facility at the start of power block, which is at ten twenty-eight every day, through lunch, which ends at eleven twenty-three. So as long as they're in good standing, they can go do that. We used to get it approved like in the September handbook, but then by the time, like what I, with the kids who come in, I want to say, we have totally good expectations of you. We want you to be great, you know, coming in. So maybe in the first few weeks, we'll stop this. Once they get settled and not wait until October to let them go. So we started, I think, last year to approve them in the August school committee so that when we're ready to move forward with the privileges, that it's ready to go because parents need to sign off, guardians need to sign off. What we are adding, the only addition since I put it in red, is the seniors, or the current seniors, so they were juniors last year, they came to me last year. We have an AP seminar. And what that class is, is it's if you have two or more, if you're taking two or more AP courses, you can have an AP seminar block. And what that is, is an eighty minute, instead of having assigned to a class, you're assigned to an AP seminar. You go in, you check in with guidance, you just let them know where you're going to be and that's where you need to be. So if you're working up here in the side of the cafe or sometimes they come in here to learn comments and they're just working on material. The seniors came to me and said, on Mondays and Fridays, if this AP seminar was either first block or last block, would we be able to work from home, you know, in the morning? So to be able to get up and just, you know, start working and then come in for second block? Or if it was last block at twelve forty-three, instead of sitting up here and working, can I go home and go work at home? You know what I mean? Because sometimes, you know, there's quite a few kids that may be on, and so some may like to work just independently with no distractions on their AP work. So I talked to Mr. Bardwell about it. He didn't think that it was, you know, that was a good idea. I love when kids advocate for change, you know, in the right way. I don't force any, it's only for seniors because there are some juniors that have AP seminar blocks, but this is just for seniors and only on Monday and Friday if it's first or last. So that's the only addition to this.
So they could have an AP block on the two weekends, you have service day, but they would.
They need to be, yes.
And they're taking the most rigorous, short work. They're taking at least two AP classes.
Right.
But they tend to be a hard working.
They do. They work hard. And like I said, sometimes like for us, the purpose of these things too is time management. And sometimes they just need, you know, a break. So maybe, you know, in the morning too, they can get up and work in their pajamas. You know what I mean? Not have to get out with a dress to come in and do the work right away, you know, for whatever reason. But they get the job done. Because if they don't, they're not getting the break, you know, then they won't have it.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the middle, senior, high school senior privilege permission slip as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Do a roll call again.
Aye, yeh.
Aye, Dragon Eddie.
Aye, Schmier.
Aye, Milton.
And I, Yoo. So that motion passes as well.
Well, thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
Elementary school student handbook.
So this is much shorter. You'll see that the only changes we've made is staffing. It's a little, looks a little overwhelming when you look at it, but just because someone's red doesn't mean they black the district. So there's been some movement of positions between the different schools.
That was going to be my only question. It's a lot of red. Where are those people?
So no other changes, just the staff?
Just the staff.
Easy, easy. All right. So I will make a motion to accept the changes to the elementary student handbook as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Dragon Eddie.
The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. We are excited about the year ahead of us. In addition to workshops and webinars, we're looking forward to spending time with our Inclusion Matters community as we bring back fun social events like craft nights and Parents' Night Out. We'll be kicking off our events with an information table at each school's curriculum night this fall. Please stop by to meet Inclusion Matters board members, ask questions, learn more about us, and join our mailing list for a chance to win some awesome giveaways. In the words of Inga Beal, "We all have the ability to promote a culture of acceptance and inclusion." As a parent, you do not need to have a student with a disability to get involved in Inclusion Matters. We are a network of families who understand and care. For more information about Inclusion Matters, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dragon Eddie. And the last item under business is the superintendent contract update. So as you know, we considered this superintendent's contract during our last executive session held in June and decided to extend it four years with a five percent salary increase. So I'd like to make a motion to increase Mr. Bardwell's annual salary to one hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred and two dollars effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, and extend his contract through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote.
Aye, yeh.
No, Dragon Eddie.
No, Schmier.
Aye, Milton.
And I, Yoo. So that passes with a vote of three to two. All right. And last up is the approval of policies, which is Mrs. Dragon Eddie and Mrs. Milton.
Yes. So we still have the non-discrimination policies open. We just got them back from the attorney today. So we are going to push them back to the September meeting and then hopefully close them out and be finished with them.
All right. I remember those days well. I don't think so. All right. Warrant, subcommittee.
Okay, it's a long one. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Bill warrants, June second, two thousand and twenty-two for forty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two for one hundred and forty-six thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two for fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two for one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two for forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two for sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents. August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two for fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two for twenty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two for forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. And August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two for eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. The following payroll warrants, number thirty-eight, on June tenth for five hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and two cents. Number thirty-nine for June twenty-fourth, four hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Number forty on July eighth, five hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Number forty-one, July twenty-second, for four hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-three cents. Number five on August fifth, four hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. And number six on August nineteenth, for four hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-two cents. And there's usually a little statement at the end that's not here, but as always, once signed and approved, they're available in the selectmen's office for review. Does that sound right?
Well, it's impressive. Miss a bean on those. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address that Finney may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. All right. Seeing that we have none, our next, oh, no, we have to do the calendar. District-wide, the first day for students and teachers. Monday, August twenty-ninth, the teachers report back. Tuesday, August thirtieth, is the first day for grades one through twelve. And on Wednesday, September seventh, is the first day for pre-K and